All right, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00. Four items listed on the agenda. We have six Board members present with one absent. And at this time, I will ask that we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is public comments. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have a few names on the list. When I call your name, come up. There was a timer that'll beep at three minutes, and we ask that you wrap up your comments at that time, please. And just as a reminder, the Board does not respond tonight. Usually, there is a follow-up email or contact done after the meeting. So we'll start with Mandy Pachalski. Thank you.
My name is Mandy Pachalski. I am the mother of three children at field school and a member of Moms Demand Action here in Elmhurst. I would first like to thank the School Board for their no vote last year at the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference. We keep hearing about rural areas downstate and the long response times for local police departments. And Resolution 3, on its surface, sounds like a nice compromise until we look at the research. In fact, research from the National Association of School Psychologists in a 2018 report, "School Security Measures and Their Impact on Students," said that there is no evidence that these security officers are making students safer. Research shows SROs negatively impact student perceptions of safety and even increase fear for some students. I'd like to share just a few examples of incidences of mishandled guns in schools from Giffords. March of this year in Ohio, the district transportation director left her pistol in a small unlocked plastic case near her desk when she went to the restroom. The director had been trained as part of the district's concealed carry program and allowed to have a gun on school property. Two first graders found the gun and thankfully reported to the principal. No shots were fired. In New York, January of this year, a school resource officer and retired police officer left an unloaded, holstered weapon on the counter of a bathroom. Largo, Florida, October of last year, a substitute elementary school teacher was helping children do cartwheels when a loaded gun with 19 rounds of ammunition fell out of his waistband. No shots were fired. Miami, October of last year, a school security guard left a gun in the bathroom. A fifth-grade student found the gun and alerted teachers right away. No shots were fired. Missoula, Montana, September of last year, a school resource officer left her duty weapon in the faculty bathroom at an elementary school. These are just four of the examples I could've shared, over 80 that I found. Research done by the U.S. Department of Justice and FBI entitled "A Study of Actor-Shooter Incidents in the U.S. Between 2000 and 2013" found that most incidents ended between two and five minutes, with the majority around three minutes. In that same report, the analysis showed that legal force from police and bystanders has brought an end to the incident in less than one-third of active shootings, but not usually in schools. Another report from Trace, April 2019, found that gunmen often target schools with armed guards. In 2018, this happened in Florida, Kentucky, Maryland, and Texas. This should give us pause when we hear more guns in our schools make our children safer and would deter a shooter. Even though mass shootings get a lot of media attention and public attention, our children are far more likely to be the victim of an unintentional or intentional shooting from an unsecured weapon. We desperately all want to keep our children safe, and the conversation on how to protect our children from gun violence needs to continue. But voting yes to have IASB lobbying for Resolutions 1 and 3 is not the answer. Please be confident in a vote for no for both Resolutions 1 and 3. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next is Dorothy McGuire.
My name is Dorothy McGuire, and I'm a resident in this district. And I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst. The League of Women Voters is here to voice our concern about the potential for dangerous consequences of the two IASB resolutions recommended for adoption at the November 2019 IASB conference. We urge the School Board to instruct your delegate to vote no on both Resolution 1 and 3. Resolution 1 would provide local school boards the option to decide if they will allow for properly-trained staff to be armed in school buildings. Resolution 3 would establish school safety grants so school districts can hire school resource officers who may carry a firearm, provided training is received. Both of these would serve to bring guns into our schools. Schools should be places of safety. There is no evidence to show that arming personnel within a school increases school safety. These actions are contrary to conclusions in a 2015 New England Journal of Medicine evidence-based, peer-reviewed study, which indicated that more guns do not make communities safer, but rather contribute to the rise in gun-related suicides and homicides in our country. We cannot risk introducing firearms into our schools. We should be working to keep guns out of our schools. Please refer to our two fact sheets for alternative measures for school safety to explore. In the future, please insist that IASB recommendations be data-based, utilized evidence-based, peer-reviewed research, which will give all involved the confidence that choices are based on the best information available, to create the safest possible options for the safety of our schoolchildren, school district employees, and our communities. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Dorothy McGuire, co-president of Elmhurst League of Women Voters. Our fact sheets will be given out to you at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha Baker?
My name is Marsha Baker. I'm a resident of Elmhurst. Both of my children graduated from York High School many years ago. So I am here to urge the Board to vote no on Resolution 3, the school safety grant program. Having armed guards at school seems like it would keep our kids safe, and we all want to feel that it will. But at this time, as has been said, there is no solid evidence to show cause and effect of having armed guards in schools, whether they be police or safety resource officers. Almost half of mass shooters take their own lives near or at the scene of the crime, and usually, they go into these shootings prepared to die. So it makes no sense to think that having armed guards are going to prevent shooters from coming in. School shootings represent a small fraction of gun violence, but the trauma they invoke leads us to want to do something, anything. Unfortunately, many of the things that we know would be effective, such as banning assault weapons, universal background checks, red flag laws, which we now do have a red flag law in Illinois, are still being debated. The consequences of having police in schools also is not totally benign. A report from the Giffords Foundation found that police have mishandled guns or allowed students to get their hands on weapons more than 60 times, and also that there's a trend for school administrators in middle and high schools to refer students to law enforcement for nonviolent offenses rather than receiving counseling at school or working with them to do some kind of mediation and intervention. I urge the School Board to vote no on Resolution 3 and focus on other violence prevention methods. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carol Landau?
My name is Carol Landau. I want to thank the Board for their plan to, or their intention to vote no on the IASB Resolution Number 1, arming teachers. It's okay, I have some fact sheets that I would like to hand out, so that I'm not reading a whole bunch of stuff for you, because I know you're all educated and you can read. There's one fact sheet on Resolution 3, but I'm going to be talking more about Resolution 1 right now. So I live here in Elmhurst. I'm a long-term resident of Elmhurst and proud parent of a York grad. Go Dukes. I'm also someone who lost a father, an aunt, and a cousin to gun violence. So this is an issue that's very close to my heart. I want to thank you for not believing the lie that the solution to gun violence is more guns. I'm offering a fact sheet that I'm passing around. I loaded it down from the League of Women Voters site, and I am a League member, but I'm not here on behalf of the League tonight. On the fact sheet for Resolution 1, the League does propose some alternatives that will help to keep our children safe in school. On the first page, some of those include passing red flag laws, encouraging responsible firearm storage, raising the age to purchase semi-automatic guns, requiring background checks on all gun sales, creating threat assessment programs in schools, which I understand our school will be undertaking, using expert-endorsed school safety upgrades, which we'll be doing as a part of our referendum implementation, initiate effective emergency planning, and create safe and equitable schools. I would really appreciate your consideration. I know you do intend to, as a Board, to say no to Resolution 1. I would certainly encourage you to do the same for the resolution on resource officers. I know that's a little bit moot, because we have had a resource officer in our schools for a long time. In fact, my uncle Larry Wagner was the first one, I believe, who was at York High School. I wanted to just read one thing that I found very compelling in the summary, and it was from a retired teacher from the southwest suburbs. "When police arrive, it's a volatile situation. How do they know who is the shooter and who are the armed teachers? In the heat of the crisis, mistakes happen. Anyone with a gun, not wearing a uniform, would be suspect." Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, then we will move on in the agenda. Approval of Board meeting minutes, approval of September 24, 2019, and October 8, 2019 minutes. Were there any changes? Okay, then those stand as presented. And approval of September 24, 2019, closed session minutes, those stand as presented. All right, next is the superintendent's agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items a Board member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, then could I have a motion for the consent agenda? And that lists the letters of the items, please.
I move that we pass the consent agenda items A through N.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead and call the vote. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio? Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Next on the superintendent's agenda, action items. Item A, approval of medical and dental insurance contract.
Okay, so if we have a motion and a second, then during the discussion period on this item, we do have our representative here to explain anything that people would want to possibly question. But this is the recommendation from our insurance committee. We recommend that you approve this. Chris can speak to the specifics of the rationale, as well as he is our representative to that committee.
Do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of Blue Cross/Blue Shield Health and Dental Insurance Plans for the January 1 to December 31, 2020 year as presented.
I second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Could you give a little bit of a highlight for us, please?
So we have Renee Formel here from Alliant to give a brief overview of the insurance renewal.
I work with your insurance committee. The renewal action that came in for January 1, for the first time in three years now, the PPO program did receive an increase. The required increase was 5.8%. The HMO programs were a 1.9% decrease. The dental program was a 3.5% decrease. The major contributor to the increase on the PPO program was a 12.2% increase in claims that we saw in the current policy year. So the committee always reviews throughout the course of the year with Blue Cross/Blue Shield, with myself, and then at the point of the renewal plan alternatives to help mitigate that renewal increase. We decided as a committee to investigate prior authorization. It's a prescription drug program that is in place with practically all employer plans. It's in place on your HMO programs. The requirement is for certain prescription drugs on the prior authorization list before the pharmacist will fill that drug. Supporting medical records have to be reviewed by Blue Cross/Blue Shield. It promotes safety, no abuse on the drugs, and clarifies that there's medical necessity. With this plan design change, it impacted approximately 99 plan members of the 1,300 plan members on the program. It yielded approximately $180,000 savings. So the committee reviewed the list of the drugs, the communication pieces that we would put out to the plan members, impact letters that they would receive to be educated on this. They voted to have an employee vote. 460 employees participated in the employee vote. 252 voted to implement the program, which resulted in a revised 3.9% renewal increase. So the program with your approval will be rolled out as of January 1. And we will be doing, annually, we do 14 open enrollment meetings that we host to communicate this type of information with the employees onsite at all of the schools.
Questions? Chris?
Could you repeat those numbers, please? The number of folks who elected to vote, and how many voted in the affirmative?
467 voted. 252 voted yes, which was 54% of the population that voted. And the vote was open to everyone eligible for health insurance, regardless of if they are enrolled on the PPO program, because it is a plan that they're eligible to enroll in.
Okay. And the high-level argument of those who voted against the proposal would be what?
It was just a matter, they reviewed the information, and they either voted to renew with the 5.8% or to elect the 3.9. So they did not want a plan design change. We also shared with them, which was, I believe, in the materials, how it impacts the rates. And for the employees, we showed them the contribution out of their paycheck, so they could look at it from that aspect, as well as how the program works.
Okay, thank you.
You've mentioned, I believe you said something about 99 people would be affected by this? And could you explain that a little, please?
Yes. So currently, 99 of the plan members on either the PPO 1 or the HSA Plan, could be an employee, a spouse, or a dependent child, are taking a drug that is subject to prior authorization. So when they go to fill it after January 1, in addition to just having the script for that drug, supporting medical records have to be received from their physician, reviewed by Blue Cross, and approval put into place. So it's not necessarily that they cannot have the drug, but the drug will go through the program. And I think what's really important to note is that prior authorization has been in place for probably maybe 15 years. So it's not a new program, and doctors know how to work very well with the program. So do pharmacies. It's just going to be new to the PPO and the HSA PPO population.
And this might be something that you don't know offhand, but do you know how often an approval is not granted?
I don't. It's really drilling in to look for the medical necessity. Sometimes drugs are prescribed, and it's not to treat a medical diagnosis, but to get the side effect of a drug. That's an example. Sometimes they have interaction with other drugs, so it can be seen as like a checks-and-balance to have another set of eyes on it. And it's also to review that the drug that's being prescribed, there is the true medical diagnosis associated with being able to take this prescription drug.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, I think that's it, then. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lost track. All right, you can call the vote. Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Next item on superintendent's agenda is approval of resolution regarding the estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2019. Added, or is updated on the agenda on October 18, 2019.
Okay, so once again, we would need a motion and a second, and then during discussion, Chris can go over this. This is kind of a continuation of information that's been presented over time. So he'll explain essentially, you know, we are a tax-cap county, so we get CPI plus new growth. And sometimes we levy a little bit more than that to give ourselves a cushion, to make sure we capture everything that we can, but legally, we can only get those amounts, whatever that amount is, that's what we get. So Chris can explain to you, you know, the resolution process and answer any questions.
Could I have a motion, and then we'll let him go?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding the estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2019, and the notice of the proposed tax increase for publication in the Elmhurst Suburban Life.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have the estimated levy tonight. This is just a quick timeline. Back in January of 19, we received the CPI from the prior calendar year, which was a Tonight, we have the estimated levy. Then in December, we will publish in the newspaper, "The Truth in Taxation." The "Truth in Taxation" notice is really only required if our levy increase is more than 5%. It's only 3.71%, so it is not required. But we've done this in the past, just for transparency. We go through the truth in taxation process anyway. And so then, the notice is published in the paper, and then we will have a public hearing at the December board meeting. Then March is when the tax bills, well, March, we get the final EAV tax. We find out about the new construction, how much new construction there is, and then the final tax, EAV, and rates and extensions. And then the bills go out, and we receive the first half in June, and then the second half in September. This shows CPI, 1.9%. Average over the last five years is 1.52. That's because we had a few low ones at 0.7 and 0.8 back in '14 and '15. Then this just shows, you know, when EAV is going up, you know, and the tax rate goes down, that's, this just shows the inverse relationship between EAV and tax rate, no matter, but as Dave pointed out, no matter what the tax rate does, we are only allowed what, under the tax cap, CPI plus the new construction. So it's the 1.9% plus whatever we, plus the new construction. So this shows the new construction over the last few years, the last five years, and so we're estimating new construction at $34 million. That's just a rough estimate at this point. So we levy for that, $34 million plus an additional $20 million, just in case, because we don't know what new construction will actually come in at. But no matter what, the district levies, DuPage County will only extend the increase allowable under the tax cap. The levy is just a request. So this has our last year's extension and rates. Then in the middle, we have our levy, which has an operating increase of 3.85, but an overall increase of 3.71 is the levy. But we, our estimate for what we think we will receive is a 3.13 operating increase and an overall increase of 3.17. But, so on a $400,000 home with only existing property, so no new construction, the tax bill will increase 2.08% or $124.87. So that is the tax levy estimate.
All right, that's it, then. Thank you. If there's no other questions and comments, you can call the vote. Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Superintendent's Communication Fall Housing Report and Enrollment Projections.
So some nights are Nikki Tamiru night, and other nights are Chris Welton night. This is a Chris Welton night. Every year at the end of October, we give a fall housing report that includes enrollment projections, and we also include the information on class size in there each year. And we cannot do this the first meeting of the month in October, because these are based on the September 30 enrollment figures that are reported to the state, and it's very difficult to turn that around for the first meeting of the month. So Chris has prepared this year's report, and we do have, we have some assumptions based on all the kindergarten, and some uncertainties due to the fact that that's the first year of that program and how that'll shake out. But Chris will talk about how he calculated that as part of his report.
Give me the first page of the internal enrollment projections. So first, I'll just talk about this year's enrollment. Overall, we increased by 77 students to 8,596, which is the bottom there of the 1920 column before the big, heavy bar. Madison is down 10 students to 292, which is, so Madison has had steady growth, but 292, so that is a good thing, because it's finally peaked, or it seems to have peaked. At least, it's not continued to grow there at Madison. The K-5 enrollment increased by 46 students to 3,0526. The 6th through 8th decreased by eight students to 1,0896. And the York enrollment increased to 49. to 49, by 49 students to 2,0882. So, that, that is the current enrollment. These, the projections, just like forecasting the weather, the further out you go, the less reliable they are. So, when you look at the 10-day weather forecast, you're not, you don't rely on that 10th day as much as you do the next hour. Similarly, with enrollment projections, you're more reliable next year as opposed to the five-year out. The, also, it's harder to forecast for the very young students, the lowest levels, and especially this year with the all-day kindergarten that was very challenging. I asked Dave to postpone this like 10 times, because I don't feel comfortable at all with, I wanted to, after all the registrations were done, it would have been much easier to do kindergarten, but.
Well, that's not a projection.
That's true. That would be a projection. So, also, also with, with projections, it's also easier to do an entire population or a larger population than a very small population, so it's easier to do a district-wide, you know, to come within a percentage point than one of our small, very small schools. It's harder. So, those are just some normal projection disclaimers. But, the high school, York is, is, is projected to peak next year in, in '21, '22. As the middle schools had peaked back in 2015, '16, and had some large classes go through, those are hitting York now, and so, York will peak next year at 2,0892, or that's, that's what we are projecting right now. So, as those, those declines in the middle school come through, then York's enrollment is projected to go down after next year, 2020, '21. The middle schools have, have been steadily decreasing, and, and especially at Churchville and Sandberg. Churchville is down to 507 students this year, and, and is projected to go down 30 more next year to 475. After that, it'll start slowly increasing again, and Sandberg is also going down next year to 656. So, it, it's had some steady declines as well. It had, Sandberg had 749 students back in '15, '16, and is projected next year to be at 656. So, the elementaries, you know, the kindergarten, we have it projected now to go up from 505 kindergarten this year to 620 next year with the implementation of all-day kindergarten. But, that is a very rough estimate. Dave, you know how many have registered so far?
As of this morning, it was 510.
510. So, I have in here 620. That might, that's a real rough estimate. So, so, the, the K5 enrollment.
Dave says it's 522 now. He's.
522 now. I projected 620, so, I don't know. I, it's a very rough estimate. I don't want to be held, held responsible for that projection, really, because I don't know where that's going to end up. So, that's it really for the enrollment projection.
Questions? Chris?
Yeah. First, I was just hoping you could discuss a little bit the methodology you use to put the projections together.
Yeah. We use the cohort survival method, meaning you look at the percentage increase from one grade to the next. So, so, historical increases in classes are used to project forward. Use those historical survival ratios from one year to the next to project future grade level increases.
Okay. Understood. And then, could you remind me just generally what our capacity utilization rates are now in our buildings, both now and then pro forma for the referendum? Like, if these projections are off and we actually grow, I'm just trying to remember where we were at on those metrics.
Every, every building in our district will have a, a very nice capacity, once the boundaries kick in, which won't happen, you know, until several years down the road when they're, they're fully implemented. They will be in the 80s, 80% range ultimately, except for Lincoln, which will be in the 90s and, and close to capacity when it's, when it's built.
Okay. And so, the biggest point of uncertainty in this is the kindergarten line item?
Yes. For sure.
Okay. And that, that enrollment period ends Friday?
Well, the enrollment period ends on Friday, but this is the first year that we've done online registration, and it's the first year we've done it this early. So, we could have move-ins and late registrations, and we typically, at one of our elementary schools, tend to have some late registrations anyway that we're anticipating. So, I, I think that next year, we'll be able to refine this a little bit better as to what the effect of all-day kindergarten was. And I think that, you know, when people don't have to worry about going to a school outside of their boundary area, I think we'll see another uptick possibly in all-day, and possibly also in years two and three, after people see what the program is and hear people talk about it and things. I think there's a likelihood, that tends to be the experience of other districts. So, I think there's going to be a little bit of uncertainty in that kindergarten number for the next two to three years before it's, we start to get a better idea what that means. Just for the people that are on the board that are new, I don't know if anybody's questioned why you have that jump in students in ninth grade. It's because we get students from private schools that come to us at York. So, there's typically a percentage factored in that, that has been relatively constant.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask if we could jump over to your other presentation? And I'm sure, and many, no, no, no. The, the counts of sections by numbers.
Yeah. That's, there's someone else.
Darn.
So, so, we.
Let me just stay up there. You are not done yet.
He tried.
It's a nice try, though. All right. So, you want to ask yours to Chris now?
I don't know. How do you want to do it?
And we'll come back to you. Is that all right? Or do you have something for Chris?
I don't have anything on this.
Okay. So, you go.
So, Chris, you're on. And it, and it goes to the kindergarten enrollment for, I guess, both of you. So, based on the increased numbers at kindergarten, and that we are having all-day kindergarten, which is attracting more people, how does that impact, and I'm going to say Lincoln just because of the capacity, but I kind of want to open it up to all of our schools to make sure that as we build, that we're building to the enrollment projections.
Well, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference, because typically, in the past, we've gotten a big jump in first grade, because not having all-day kindergarten, people have chosen options. And so, it's really just making sure that, that we have enough classrooms to accommodate the extra kindergarten, because as that pushes up, that would sort of push up somewhat normally as compared to what it did before, unless we get a lot of people that make housing choices over the next several years due to the new schools, or all-day kindergarten, or other things, whatever. So, we did plan when we planned for space. We did plan, and that was part of the boundaries, that was part of the Jefferson addition, the, ultimately, the Jackson addition. We, we took into account what they would need to have enough space to accommodate all-day kindergarten in, at each of the buildings. So, we feel comfortable that we will be able to accommodate the all-day kindergarten.
So, am I hearing you correctly, as, as the kindergarteners are being registered and coming in, we're looking at what schools they are and ensuring that those schools, that they will ultimately go to, or they're coming from, the neighborhood, will be able to go to that neighborhood school?
Well, we know the school-by-school breakdown. We, we've been monitoring that. Ellen has been tracking it actually almost in real time as the stuff come in. She, she's verifying stuff so that we can get the lottery process going as soon as possible. The, when you say, like, as they're registering, are, are we ensuring that we have space? I mean, right now, we, we're, we're at 522, so this year, we had 505, so we're over this year already. Where we end up, I don't know, but we, we will have, we will have space. The, the space is not an issue. Now, as far as going to all-day kindergarten at their home school, when you talk, if that's the question you're asking, that goes back to the presentation we made about some schools not being able to accommodate everybody who wants that this first year or two. And those people would, would possibly have a, an option at a different school. Yeah.
Longer term, when they're all built out.
Yes. Then we'll be, then we'll be good.
Okay. The second piece, and I don't know if you can answer this, Chris, but I'm just thinking about our enrollments, and I'm looking at your numbers, and we are still seeing, even though, you know, Madison has a little bit of a decrease, or it might just be this year, it appears that we still are an outlier with our comparable or nearby districts, where we're still increasing enrollment significantly versus other districts. Is that, is still the trend? I mean, it looks like it based on your numbers.
Yes. And I think Elmhurst is attractive to families, and that makes sense to me, that our district would continue to increase.
Anything else on this? Oh, Chris?
How accurate have you been in the past in predicting these numbers?
As I said, accurate for the next year. The five-year out, you know, I, I think it's like, I have the, because I'm using the past to predict the future, the trends are there, but I think at some point, I had York at 3,000 in that 2021 year, as opposed to 2,0892. So, I know that I was, I was too high in, in New York, like, five years ago or four years ago, that it wasn't.
But that, that's actually not that bad. I mean, if we're talking a swing factor of 100 or 2, and we're at 80% capacity utilization, then that's, then we have enough cushion, which is what I was getting at, so.
But when I, I look at what I predicted for this year, it was 8,006, 26, and we came in at 8,596. So, I was off 30. So, the one year, it's not bad, although this kindergarten thing is, is going to mess it all up for me. My reliability is, is very skewed, and I, I'm very unhappy about this.
It's a good thing we're an attractive district.
If I can't torture Chris periodically, I don't know what getting up in the morning means, so.
All right. Thank you.
Back, I don't know where this is, but somewhere, there's a document that says what our, what the projected utilization of our buildings would be at the end of the referendum, so that each building was four-section, right? Except for.
Well, we, we, the goal would be to go to four-section schools. Some of our schools, like Jefferson and some other schools, Jackson, would be more like three-section schools. But, but the, but the ideal is you want to have four-section schools, if possible. You'd prefer not to have less than three-section schools. It gives you the ability to balance class sizes better, it gives you the ability to schedule your buildings better, it gives you the, the ability to schedule your auxiliary services and your, your staffing, and avoid travel teachers, and provide the social emotional services better and all that kind of stuff. So, when you have those schools that, where they occasionally have two sections, or, or in some cases, we may have even had a school that, I don't know if we've ever had one that dropped down to one, but that's when it becomes very difficult to deal with anomalies that occur if you have a very small class or a very large class, and it gets to be difficult to staff and program.
All right. Anything else for Chris? All right. So, who's doing the next part?
Well, we, we've always included, if you have questions, we can address them. We've always included, at this point, information on the class sizes, and the last slide in this presentation shows the, shows the aggregate as it relates to our class size targets at each of the elementary grade level spans. And then, what Kara asked us to do this year was to show things in a, in a breakdown by grade level, so we, we added some additional information. We, and Mary Ann put, put that information together for us, and she also tried to show a little bit that in, in some of the class sizes that are one or two students over-target, it's often because we have some, some special education students or other special learners that are in class for portions of the time, but typically aren't in there for the core instruction times, or oftentimes are not in there all day long. So, we just, we just showed that, just to try to give a little bit more full picture of some of the things that, that go on during the day at our schools. We're relatively similar to where we always are. We are usually below our target on average, but we have some sections that go over-target at some of the schools, where, where we do have either some, some crowding issues, not crowding issues, but where we have more students. That, that has tended to be Hawthorne and Lincoln over the years, and Hawthorne should get some relief when the construction project is completed, and then, it sometimes tends to be at one of the smaller schools. Couple of years ago, Jackson had a, had an odd class size. Jefferson has always been pretty, pretty standard, like, every year, it just seems to come in at the same number. But this year, we have one at Edison, and that, that can happen if you, if you get a class where you have an odd section that makes it difficult to, you know, either have class sizes that are a little bit higher, or class sizes that are very low and not as close to the average, to, or the target.
So, I guess I just want to understand that the purple bars in this graph, in the graphs that are broken out by grade represent that, you know, and I'm just looking at this grade three, which seems on the high side to me. It makes me nervous moving forward where those numbers are going to go. But what it means in those purple bars is that special learners or special need students are accounted for in a class to make it that class size, but are not there during the day learning? And so, the instructional periods don't include 27, 28, or 27 kids or 26 kids in that class throughout the day?
Those students are assigned to a teacher because they have to be on a class list, and that's how they get reported to the state. That's how student growth can be factored in, based on, on who they're assigned to. It's, some of it is part of legal requirements for the state. Some of it is just that they are with a regular ed classroom teacher for portions of the day, so that when you have parent-teacher conferences or report cards or other things like that, you have a responsible person. But, but they oftentimes are not in there for the full day or even the majority of the day, and some of those students that are most impacted, the, the portions of the day that they miss are usually the ELA and math. they miss are usually the ELA in math when they, if they need extra support for different reasons.
This really doesn't show us how many of those students are being pulled out from those periods, right? It just shows us that there is a class impacted, right? Just using this grade three. The 27 students, we have four sections at 27, but we don't know how many of those are not truly 27 during the instructional periods.
Mary Ann, you pulled those students, you talked to the principals, and you put some of that together. Do you have an easier way to explain this than what I attempted?
No, I mean, I think the explanation is accurate, like your understanding of what you're seeing is accurate. I could not come up with a way to sort of show exact numbers because we were summarizing by section and numbers of students per section, so I just couldn't come up with a visual that would allow you to see all of that information at the same time. So, I just tried to sort of indicate where that was happening, where there were sections with at least one student who wasn't there typically during ELA and math, as Dave mentioned. So, I mean, I have, you know, my best information on exact numbers. It's typically, you know, it's typically one or two students. I think there's one case where there's a larger number of three or four students. Does that help?
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with the sentiment that that third grade in particular looks higher than I'm comfortable with, and we've talked about my concerns on this issue, and I would just like to see a continued commitment to measuring academic performance of kids who are in these, the tails on the larger end of the distribution, both in the year that they're in it and then also, you know, the subsequent years. I just, I know I might be an outlier on it, but I'm personally still not convinced that that doesn't have an impact on outcomes. So, I know that we have been accumulating data, and hopefully, we can continue to do that and dig deeper into it over time as well, so.
In case it's useful, based on the information that I have, which, you know, can obviously change, all of the third, just by chance, all of the third-grade sections that are, you know, would be shown in that purple is always two students, so you can sort of count down from there.
I think that we did, I think that we did put some information together at one point several months ago related to that question, and we can continue to, we can continue to monitor, we can continue to monitor that. That's, you know, we can pull that information relatively easily.
Courtney, did you get your...
Just say that again, Mary Ann, please.
So, looking at the kind of more detailed information, it just happens that these, for these third-grade sections, the numbers of students, so all I did was indicate that a section had at least one student. It happens that each of the sections at third grade have two students. So, for example, if you see one section here that has 27 students, two of those students are being, leaving and, you know, going to see another teacher during ELA and/or math instruction, in case that helps sort of put it in perspective, yeah.
Thank you. Margaret?
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, I just want to be clear. For, let's go with the 27, and there's four sections. Do each of those four sections have two children that are leaving?
Yeah, so there are, there are four sections that have at least one student who is leaving. It happens that in every case, it's two students, just for this particular grade level.
Sorry. Any other questions? So, I just thank you for putting this together. I just feel like there's always a lot of questions about it, and, you know, we do actually look at it and discuss it, and I think it's important for us. It's always part of the conversation as we move through the agenda items for the year. So, thank you, Mary Ann and Dave, for putting this together, so we have this as a point of reference and can use it moving forward. All right. Any other comments, questions on this? Okay, so we're actually supposed to vote, right? Or no? This is just, no?
No, that's just informational.
I'm totally confused tonight. Need to actually look at the agenda. All right. This was just the enrollment projection. Okay, now, we're on to facilities update.
Okay, so, facilities update. The architects and construction managers and our facilities department are really working on the interior designs right now and working on the final numbers that will be presented to the finance committee on November 19th. And so, that continues to evolve a little bit, but on December 2nd, we wanted to show the interior designs after the finance committee sees them to Edison, so that that community has, that neighborhood has another opportunity to see and weigh in. So far, they've only seen the exterior designs. And then, obviously, have one more round of feedback there to bring the final designs to you at the December 10th, I believe, is the first board meeting in December, board meeting, so that we can, so that everybody can get the bid packages together, and that's the goal, is to have the bids go out in January. So, that's kind of where we are at with that. In January, we will also establish a plan with our administrators and our architects to decide what types of issues need to be addressed for the transition during construction. And so, there'll be a variety of different subcommittees that are formed that'll be made up of different people depending on the nature of the work. There will be community members, teachers, and all kinds of people that will have the opportunity to weigh in. But in some committees, that might not be necessary. So, for example, if you're talking about transportation, you know, that might be one thing if you're talking about the culture and the traditions and that type of thing, that's another, that's a whole nother thing. If you're talking about staffing, if you're talking about logistics of pickup and drop-off and lunches and creating a schedule, so all the various different things that we have to do will involve different groups of people. So, we're gonna set that process up. Some of that may start later this spring, so we'll have a meeting to do some planning for that. Then there'll also be another meeting with the architects and the construction managers and the core team to take a look at the, to take a look at revising the timeline of the projects now that we have changed the way we're bonding out the project, so that we can come back to the finance committee and the board with some revised plans for what we think makes sense for staging the work, which will look different than the original plan for obvious reasons. And that is, that's essentially the update at this point.
Questions on that?
More just to comment. In the recent dialogue we had in the last finance committee meeting, there was some moving pieces that were being pulled forward into the current phase from later phases. And I would just, the next meeting on the 19th, if they could come with the numbers specifically of how much has been pulled forward, so that we can look at it, you know, and make a, is it on-budget assessment that's accurate? And you could pass that along to them as a request in advance, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Freedom of Information Act requests.
There were two. One requesting specific emails and correspondence, which was denied. One requesting specific payroll information, which was granted.
All right. Tweet of the week.
As always, we are excited to reveal the great things that are going on in our classrooms as recorded by our teachers and administrators on social media. This week, the honor goes to fourth-grade field teacher Valerie Baxter. She received a little bit of a gift when a green screen was installed right outside of her classroom. Not that it was solely for her, but hey, proximity has its benefits. So, the students are out and using this. The one thing that strikes me as a radio and TV major, I didn't get to much of this technology until I was in college. Now, high school students certainly can get it now, but that technology, due to advancements, has gone down further and further. So, students are getting access and skills that it took many of us 20-plus more years to gain. So, congratulations to Valerie Baxter and her fourth-grade classroom at Field. Always hashtag ignite D205 and at Field D205.
Okay, thank you. Next is Board Communications. So, we did have one item that we put down that we intend to discuss as the intended no vote at the IASB Delegate Assembly on allowing school employees to carry concealed weapons on school grounds and discussion of other IASB Delegate Assembly resolutions. So, I just would like to read the memo that was in the board packet for the rest of the board from me. Each year, the Board of Education selects a delegate to represent the district at the joint conference at the annual Delegate Assembly in November to vote on non-binding resolutions that are submitted for consideration by school boards from across the state. On its website, the IASB states that the purpose of the Delegate Assembly is to inform advocacy efforts on behalf of its membership. Resolution number one reads as follows. Student safety submitted by Mercer County School District 404, be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans which allow voluntary district employees in any capacity the ability to carry a concealed firearm on district property, provided the employee has a valid Illinois FOIA card, holds a certified Illinois concealed carry license, has completed all additional trainings and certifications set forth by the respective school board, one of which must include yearly certified active shooter training. Only district employees who fulfill all requirements listed and receive superintendent and board approval would be eligible as an active and armed part of the student safety and protection plan. There is more written in the resolution, but that is the high level. Dr. Margaret Harrell, the board's representative to the IASB Delegate Assembly, voted no on substantially the same resolution last year and intends to do so again this year. If the board wishes to address this matter, it should be brought up only for discussion under Board Communications tonight at our meeting. If it's discussed and the sense of the board is that Dr. Harrell should vote differently, an action item can and will be placed on the agenda for the board's November 12th meeting. Otherwise, no action is needed, and Dr. Harrell will again vote no. So, that said, it is important that we just discuss, if you, if you would like to put it on the November 12th for a formal vote, we can do that. Otherwise, you know, Dr. Harrell will proceed. So, do you want to take it from there?
So, again, opening it up for the opportunity to discuss this item and/or any of the items in this packet, but we specifically talked about item one for discussion. So, just wanted to see if there are, there's 12 new items in the resolution, five amended items in the IASB resolution. Everyone had a copy of it in advance. So, again, I'll just open it up if there's any comments, and if not, we can, we'll just open up to see if there's any comments. One of the things I'd like to discuss toward the end is installing a more formal process where we can go through and take a look and discuss each one of these items. So, we can talk about that at the end of this, but right now, we're going to focus on the 2019 resolution report, if there's any questions or comments on these topics.
Yeah, I think as we discuss this issue, it's no surprise to anyone on this board that I feel strongly, as a board member, that we continue to oppose these resolutions, not just because of some of the comments we heard in public comments tonight, but I strongly believe that this is not a solution to a school safety issue, and I strongly believe that as a board, we should continue down the road that we have begun last year.
Can I just clarify? You're referencing this resolution, because you said these resolutions, because there's a bunch of them here. Okay, thank you.
Beth?
I agree that we have a Safety and Security Committee that works hard to look at ways that we can address the issue of student safety in our schools, and I don't feel that this resolution is the right way to protect our students, so I support your vote of no for this resolution. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, I'm going to assume that there's no more comments on this resolution. One of the things I'd like to discuss and try to get some ideas on is in moving forward. So, planning now for the 2020 resolution package that's gonna come out in likely the end of September, October, how the board might want to move forward to address this. One idea that has been proposed is that a committee, i.e. perhaps the policy committee, would go through each one of these items and move forward in a discussion and move forward with a recommendation to present to the board. So, that would, if that idea is reasonable, then that would preclude a standing meeting in the October timeframe for the policy committee, and then that would mean that the board would get a recommendation likely the beginning of November, perhaps the end of October, to move forward with. So, that is a idea to consider.
So, I like the idea of a formal process, and I don't like the idea of creating committees for committees. We do have the policy committee standing and active, and I think that would be an appropriate place to discuss and look at all these potential changes that could impact all of us. So, I think it's a great idea.
So, we'll probably go ahead and get that on the calendar, knowing that these come out the end of September, I think, so it would have to be in October and then moving forward, and then we'll have a little more formal process put in place. So, Dirk, you are good? Anything else? There are no other comments on resolutions or any other discussion?
It might be possible, you know, the new laws typically go into effect on January 1st after they pass laws, and it might be possible, as long as we have enough time for first and second readings, to just push back the policy committee and time that up so that you don't have to add an extra meeting to do that portion of it. We could see if that works.
Okay. All right. I just have a couple of other things I just wanted to share with you. It's related to the IASB. So, the board presidents of Naperville 204, Naperville 203, Wheaton, and myself met and just discussed participation in IASB and the, you know, the fee structure and had a small discussion. We're gonna circle back after we gather some more information, but I just wanted to let you know that that's happening. We represent about 60-some thousand students in the state between the four of us. So, there were just some questions we all had about IASB and professional development and, you know, what it looks like for larger districts like ours. So, I will keep you informed, but wanted to let you know that that meeting took place just last week. So, that, and then just... So that, and then just secondly, this was just kind of a really, I thought, a really good moment for our district, and I wanted to share it with you. So, you know, we did the special education review. And we approved a lot of staff and brought in a lot of new people. And last Wednesday, there was a SURGE meeting, which, if you don't know, is the Special Education Resource Group. And they just had an informative night with the new people. People talk about the org chart and where they are. I think we're gonna get the same presentation, but it hasn't happened yet. And there were about 30-some parents there. And I just, you know, it was a really good meeting. And there's a lot of great things happening for our kids in that population. And I think it's important that you know that. So I was there as a parent, but wanted to pass that along as a board member, so. I think that's all that I have unless somebody else has a communication. So thank you. I already thanked him on email, but thank you to you and your team for doing that, because it was excellent, so. All right, anything else? Okay, then, we have some upcoming meetings, obviously, scheduled. Tuesday, November 12, 2019, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, but it is going to begin at 6 o'clock. It will be considered a committee-of-the-whole-type meeting, meaning we are going to dig into some topics and sit in a little bit different configuration. So you can be prepared for that. November 19 is the Finance and Operations Meeting at...
5:30.
5:30 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, November 26, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock. And if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you.